Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for taking the time to meet this evening President Eller. We're all set to begin this evening's work session. I do want to start out by, first of all, thanking everybody who participated in the master planning process. This has been a labor of love. We started over two years ago. We got certainly slowed down by the pandemic, but we didn't get stopped. And the committee continued to do its work, and as soon as we were able to, we brought everyone together to discuss the recommendations for the master plan and the capital plan moving forward. This is work, capital work that would occur over the course of the next several years. Very exciting opportunity for the district. And this evening, we are going to hear from the district's professionals related to their recommendations for the Board of Education. A little bit of a different scenario tonight, as this is a work session specifically for the Board of Education. No action will be taken this evening, but it's an opportunity for the Board of Education to hear from the professionals related to the master plan, to ask questions, and then for the public to also be able to view this meeting either this evening or later on at their convenience. And we'll post the recording as we always do. So without further ado, I'd like to hand the meeting over to Dr. Ami Karo Taich, and has been integral part of the master planning process. And Anne will introduce this evening's presenters. Thanks, Anne.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Rick. I'd like to first introduce our architects, H2M, who have been working with us for many, many years, but throughout this entire process have been really leading this work and guiding us through the master plan. We have with us tonight Severio Belfioro and Mike Lantier from H2M. And we also have Triton Construction, our construction management company, again, working with the district many years on many projects and working closely with all of us throughout this project. Kevin Sawyer, I believe, is on, and Fred Camilli. Let's see, Kevin. And we also have with us tonight Rick Ganti from Capital Market Advisors, our fiscal advisors, who, you know, who are experts in the field of financing as it relates to these kinds of projects, bond authorizations, capital reserves, and has also been providing us some valuable guidance.
As Anne had mentioned, my name is Severio Belfioro. I'm with H2M. I'm a senior architect and vice president at H2M. And joining with me is Mike Lantier. He's a senior engineer and deputy market director for H2M. And I believe, I don't know if I saw Kevin, but obviously Fred from Triton was on the call as well. They are the construction managers for the district who have helped significantly with assisting in scheduling as well as presenting some of the cost opinions associated with the work that we're going to talk about tonight. So to start off with, there's quite a bit to go through. So I'm going to try to go a little bit quick and sometimes a little bit slower to make sure that all of the information is being conveyed clearly to everybody. But I'll try to keep the presentation, like I said, brief, but there is quite a bit of information. And if anybody has any questions, I'm assuming Dr. Rick, and Anne, it's okay for them to jump in with any questions that they may have during the presentation. So the first slide that you see up there is the master plan process. Obviously, we thought that it was beneficial for the Board of Education to understand, to hear a little bit of the history that was associated with the process to date. And as Dr. Rick had mentioned, this is, or this has been a labor of love. Since 2018, the school district has been working with H2M and Triton to develop a long-range master plan for not only its buildings and grounds, but also for its infrastructure and its plan for how the education process would move forward. And as a result of that, there were three specific subcommittees that were created during this master plan process. There was one committee that looked at athletics and site work. There was one committee that looked at education, obviously. And there was one committee that was in charge of looking at the facilities. And the purpose of that was to break up the work into three of the three largest components or the largest aspects of the potential work that we would be looking to do. And each of them are different, but each of them obviously are related to each other by being able to provide resources and upgrade facilities as needed to be able to go through all this. As Dr. Rick had mentioned, that, whoa, could you just go back, Mike, for a second? As Dr. Rick had mentioned, the presentation is being recorded. So I'm not going to go through specifically everybody that was involved in each one of the three committees. But it's just important to understand that there was a considerable amount of people that represented not only the district and the administration, but there were also teachers, parents, facilities, as well as representatives of the city that were part of these committees that helped to determine the scope of the work that we're going to be presenting tonight and the priority of that work. So it was definitely a collaborative effort that was put forward to come up with what tonight's plan is. So the master plan process, what did it start with? Well, it started with first everyone looking at the 2015 Building Condition Survey, or BCS. And you're going to hear that acronym a lot during the presentation. And that is a tool that is required by the State Education Department for school districts to be able to look at their infrastructure, to be able to prioritize their needs, to be able to look at a way of preserving their infrastructure. And in addition, also identifying any program space needs, right? So they want school districts to take this responsibility upon themselves to be, to develop long-range plans for the direction of not only facilities, but the educational process. And they want those districts to be able to prioritize them and find out how they're going to fund or how they're going to be able to go about getting the work done. Each one of the committees that we talked about on the previous slide, they met at five separate meetings. They were a roundtable event where everybody got the opportunity to talk and discuss and prioritize and express their feelings and concerns. They also attended two presentation meetings that were put on, two finance committee meetings to discuss how things could be paid for. And there was one cost estimating meeting that was led by Triton in helping to determine the costs, as I had mentioned, as to what the work is going to be. The intent of those meetings, like I said, was to document and to discuss what the educational, athletic, and physical plant or those BCS needs were, including putting a priority to them and the cost. What also came out of this was extremely important. The district developed and distributed a survey that went out to all the teachers, administrators, and student parents of all 11 buildings. And this questionnaire requested feedback on items that would help improve school buildings and/or instructional space. And those results were received back in March and in December, respectively. And the results came back in from about 512 staff and again, 282 parents also responded. So again, just reinforcing that what we're presenting tonight is a collaborative effort from a lot of interested parties involved. So what happened as a result of the master plan? And the board should know that this plan has been fluid. As Dr. Rick had mentioned, it started quite a while ago, back in 2018. And the district has been updating and making or addressing some of the priorities that were identified earlier by either doing some of that work or reshuffling the priorities, priorities as the needs have changed over the last four years or so since this committee, since this process has started. So this process is definitely fluid. So what we're, again, presenting tonight represents the latest version of what we have and what we are looking at as far as the priorities within the district. So as a result of all of this work that was done and looking at the building condition survey, that BCS, and all of the items that were identified, we came up with a, with a plan that included about $395 million worth of work to be done across the district in a long range, over 20-plus years. So I know that that's a large number, but again, it's a large amount of years that we're looking to. We're really setting the roadmap and setting the direction for the district to move going forward. And the needs or the $395 million was identified or categorized into three major components. Ventilation, filtration, and air conditioning was one of them. Infrastructure, which typically deals with the building's infrastructure. ADA accessibility and being able to provide equity across all of the buildings. Program space renovations, so those are more curriculum-driven. Program space additions were also discussed and identified as needed throughout the district. And athletic fields and grounds upwards. So those are the three, the six priorities of the six components that we came up with. The next slide is really important just to give the district an idea of their existing buildings and their existing facilities. Also, just for the district to realize that out of this, there are many buildings in the district that are, have already exceeded or are coming close to 100 years in service. So it makes it more important or more pertinent for the district to have a long-range plan as to how they're going to deal with the aging infrastructure that you have and the facilities that the district has. And just briefly going through each one of the buildings, you have Education House, constructed in 1916, which the BCS identified and identified a complete renovation was needed. Damon House, constructed in 1920, which the BCS and the committees have identified is really at its end of its useful life. Mamaroneck Avenue, built in 1921, again, a building that needs various improvements and upgrades to be done. East View, created or built in 1925, recently went under, recently went under a major renovation. In 2012, a lot of the infrastructure in the building was completely upgraded. George Washington, built in 1927, and again, as the BCS has identified, various improvements are needed. Highlands, built in 1928, again, another building which the BCS had identified a complete renovation and upgrades are needed. Rochambeau, built in 1931, requires a complete renovation. Ridgeway, built in 1953, continued improvements needed. Church Street, built in 1956, various improvements needed. The High School, built in 1958, a lot more newer, but again, various upgrades needed. The Field House, built in 1958, really, the recommendation is for that building to be replaced to meet current function and athletic needs. And Post Road, the newest building in the district, built in 2010, really in good shape, not in need of much. To summarize the slide, we've really identified three buildings which need complete renovations and upgrades. Five buildings which need continued or significant renovations and upgrades to them. Two buildings which have either exceeded their useful life or need to be replaced. And one building, like I mentioned, Post Road, the newest building, which is in good shape and is, and is serving the community and the district well. We go to the next slide. So what was the charge given to the district or given to the committee from this? Well, we were given, all right, we've identified and come across through this committee approximately $400 million worth of work that needs to be done. How do we plan, how do we get this done? This is a large undertaking. How does the district plan to move forward to be able to do this work? And what we did was we identified primarily four funding sources that would be used by the district to be able to complete these capital improvements. One would be the use of voter-approved capital reserves. The second would be looking at federal and state grants. The third would be looking at voter-authorized or issuance of debt, serial bonds, they're called. A way of going out to public vote to issue debt to be able to pay for capital improvements and an annual operating budget, right? For, to update or to do district infrastructure projects. And the district has been doing that consistently year after year, utilizing a portion or appropriating an operating budget in which the facilities department and Frank is able to utilize that money to be able to get work done within the district. So we've identified those four potential funding sources. The next slide talks a little bit or shows the enrollment, because really based on some previous presentations, enrollment did come up as a question. So to be completely transparent with the board and the community, right? We want to talk about what the enrollment trends are for the district. And if you look at the chart, and I know it may be hard to see some of the numbers, but if you look from 2020, 21, going forward for the next seven years or so, you do see a decrease in enrollment. And it averages about 1.2% per year, annually, across the next seven years. But we did identify, or what we identified as part of the committee and as part of the process was that additional program space was needed. And we learned through this COVID or through the process of COVID that districts that had additional flexible space were better able to adapt and to handle the changing needs that were, that came up as a result of COVID. So even though we see a declining enrollment over the next seven years, we've also identified and prioritized the need for additional instructional and classroom space. So again, just wanted to be transparent as far as enrollment goes. Now getting into the master plan. So what we're going to talk about now are the phases of this master plan that we're going to be presenting tonight. It totals about $150 million of the $400 million overall plan. And we're going to talk about it really in three chunks of work. So the next slide, Mike, right? So talks about the first phase, which was identified as ventilation, filtration, and air conditioning. This ironically came up as the number one category that came up during the survey that was presented and passed out to the community, well, to the administrators and to the parents. This came back as one of the, as one of the highest priorities that they were looking for. And many of the classrooms.
And this was pre-COVID, right? This, like, those needs were identified prior to COVID, I think.
Yes, prior to COVID. Yep. So some of these things that we're going to discuss were things that were already in the vision or already envisioned by the community as needs. They've been exacerbated or have been brought a little bit more highlighted by the issues that have happened with COVID. But yes, these were already predetermined or pre-identified prior to that. Many of the classrooms, they utilize older univentilators with obsolete technology, typically in the filtration area of the technology. Most of the classrooms do not have air conditioning throughout the district, although there are select rooms that do have window units, although 75% of the students' time is spent in the classroom. So it obviously makes sense that addressing that indoor air quality events, you know, is paramount. However, the district has been proactive and, over the years, have addressed various common spaces, including auditoriums, cafeterias, and the main offices, which are air-conditioned, to be able to give relief to students throughout the day as they, as they work their way through it. And they have definitely made a concerted effort to keep up with any special needs or special requirements by students that are required for learning disabilities to also have those rooms air-conditioned as needed. So the ventilation, filtration, and air conditioning component of it, well, you know, what is this cost? What is this broken down by, by building? And so what this slide represents is how we've identified the ventilation and filtration, excuse me, and air conditioning needs by building. So at Church Street, we identified about $3 million worth of work needed. George Washington, about $3.2 million. Mamaroneck, $4.2 million. Post Road, already, as I had mentioned before, one of the newer buildings in the district is already, many of the spaces and classrooms are already air-conditioned. Ridgeway, $1.9 million. East View, $2.5 million. Highlands, $2.5 million. White Plains High School, $4.5. And Rochambeau, $4.5. And obviously, as the buildings are bigger, the cost for that is larger. And it came to a grand total of about $26.3 million worth of ventilation, filtration, and air conditioning work that was identified. And again, as one of the main priorities that was, that was identified and needing to be done throughout the district. The next slide talks about, well, all right, we've identified $26.3 million worth of work that needs to be done. How do we get that work done? And so there were actually four different funding sources that were identified. We looked at the Dormitory Authority through the state of New York and looking for grants. And there were approximately $2.75 million worth of grants. And just so the board is aware, the first three items that I'm going to talk about have already been applied for and awarded to the district. So the dormitory grant that I'm talking about, the district has already received and has already been guaranteed that grant of $2.75 million. There was Federal Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act, that's known as the CARISA Act, in the amount of $4.1 million, which again, was put in place along with the ARC funding or the Federal American Rescue Plan, which was specifically put in place by the federal government for districts or to assist districts in helping them to address indoor air quality, air conditioning, ventilation, and filtration issues that came to the forefront during the Corona or during the COVID age here. And those fundings and those programs were put in place to help districts to be able to get that work done. So there's about $14 million between the first three items that has been awarded to the district and ready to be able to be used to help offset the $26.3 million. So what did that leave? It left $12.6 million of funds that still needed to be acquired. And the thought would be to utilize the remaining or to utilize a portion of the 2019 capital reserve in that $12.6 million to be able to achieve $26.3 million, which would be at zero cost to the taxpayers. Because either this money is already sitting in availability from the district, although it does require voter approval to authorize the use of the capital reserve. And through grants and federal funds that have already been awarded to the district, it would result in zero cost to the taxpayers. So the first phase of addressing ventilation, filtration, and air conditioning can be accomplished at zero cost. Just to look at and to be, again, transparent with the district, obviously, we're well aware of that. Well, if I add air conditioning to the buildings, there's going to be an added energy use or energy consumption, and there's going to be maintenance, additional maintenance that's going to be associated with this new equipment that we're putting in. So we wanted to present to the board and let the board know that we were aware of this. And we, and we looked at it. And we came up with, after looking at each one of the buildings and identifying through mathematical formulas, what we anticipated, the additional electrical or energy cost across the district. We looked at about, or we came up with about $152,000 in additional cost. Now, the district is also proactive and the board should know that they're, that they're always interested in looking at alternate ways of being able to utilize alternative funding sources or energy sources to be able to offset $152,000. So working with NIPA and other state and federal agencies, the district would look at how they could help reduce their energy consumption. So although we do see a modest $152,000 in energy costs, we're confident that over the life of the program, we would look at some way of being able to reduce that or being able to compensate for that. We also see that, just like any warranty on any piece of equipment that you buy for your home, after around three or four years, ironically, when the warranty is up, some of this air conditioning equipment is going to require maintenance. And again, we took a look at through mathematical formulas of how we would look at what we think that would come up, come up with. And it's about $180,000, $186,000 a year of estimated potential repair and maintenance costs really starting after year three. Because you would think, just like I had mentioned before, any other equipment that you buy through the life of the warranty, you would expect that, that equipment to perform. But again, to be transparent, we do understand and realize that could, that there could be some added costs. Ultimately, that would be needed, that would need to be incorporated into the operating budget or Frank's budget as the years go by. And so we would need to make arrangements for, for us to be able to provide that maintenance. The maintenance also is proactive in helping to maintain the life expectancy and to keep the equipment in good operating condition. So again, those two numbers we see, one, a direct impact. Once that air conditioning gets installed, you're going to see an increase in utility costs. And one, which we see as coming out three or four years later as far as maintenance and warranty issues. So we are aware that there is some additional cost to the district once you implement and spend the money to put the, the infiltration, the ventilation and air conditioning in place. The next part of the, of the presentation talks about the Phase One renovations, improvements, and renovations to the educational program or the educational space. And what we did was we broke it out by building. And I'm going to go briefly through each one of the buildings, because again, we'll touch on all of them. You'll see that we identified the scope of work. We helped to prioritize that scope of work through the process that I had identified in the earliest slides. I'll give a little bit about what the detail of that work is. But again, since the presentation is being recorded, the public can go back and look at each one of the slides and read through exactly the work and what we're intending it to do. And then obviously Triton helped the district in putting together costs associated with it. So at Church Street, we identified a library with a new innovation lab. Includes new furniture, case work technology, about $750,000. Some work to the corridors, creating fire separations code, obviously, as the building was constructed. Now we have new and updated code requirements, so we need to keep the buildings in code compliance. We would look for new cubbies in the south and north side classrooms for about $4.1 million. New front door entrance, again, to meet ADA requirements and wheelchair accessibility, about $84,000. Cafeteria and kitchen serving line upgrades, reconfiguration of the space, increasing or replacing obsolete outdated equipment, looking at finishes, queuing spaces, how students use the space, about $703,000 for a total of $5.7 million worth of work over at Church Street.
When you said there were groups that were formed at the district level to look at the building needs, I'm assuming that on the Church Street, like, these proposals were run by the staff and the administration, the people and the parents that were at each individual build, each individual building? Or was this a decision made by a group of people at the district office at each building? I'm just curious.
Yep. There was input from each one of the buildings, both administrators, teachers, and staff at each one of the buildings, in addition to all of the other information that I had described as far as what that process was. But yes, the thought was to look at the needs of each building, because obviously it's different, right? And the administration staff, principals, teachers have, may have a different way of looking at things. But again, one of the items that I talked about was equity across the district. So you will see some of the items repeating themselves across many of the buildings because in an effort to look at not only the priority needs, but also to look at that all children across the district are treated equally and fairly. Some of those, some of those items came up as a reoccurring issue at each one of the buildings. But yes, input by building was, was received as well.
Thank you.
Michael, can I ask about the fire separation, please? What exactly does that mean? And we're looking at a pretty big number, so what's entailed?
It's corridor renovations, fire rating, removing glazing that was once allowed by code in the corridors that no longer is allowed by code. So what we would have to do is replace that glazing with fire-rated materials, looking at doors and openings that have been created or that were allowed previously under code that now need to be addressed. Stairwell enclosures, all of these items that allow students to be able to safely exit through the building during a fire, hopefully never, but, but through the issue of potentially a fire, you would be able to maintain the fire ratings as codes change. So these are updates to building materials and exit ways through the buildings.
So when you say glazing, is that the tile work?
Glazing, talking about windows or in some classrooms, you see that there's glazing, there's openings that are, that are, that you could look into the classrooms from the corridor. Some are up high, but those glazings are no longer allowed and they need to be replaced with fire-rated materials. So we would address all of those items that we identified as where potential code issues have arisen through looking and walking through each one of the buildings.
Thank you.
Sure. The next building, George Washington. Again, gym ventilation upgrades in addition to the ventilation upgrades that we had identified before. And again, you'll see the cafeteria and kitchen serving line upgrades, about $1.9 million worth of work to be done over at George Washington. At Mamaroneck, library with a new innovation lab, corridor upgrades. Again, those are ceiling replacements, floor, floor and wall finishes. Music room ADA improvements, again, excuse me, wheelchair accessibility to the music rooms, to the, to the music room, cafeteria and kitchen serving line upgrades. Again, that was one that you'll see repeated quite often throughout all of the buildings. Roof recoding, some, some issue with the roofing needs to be addressed for a total of about $5.8 million worth of work through at Mamaroneck Avenue. At Ridgeway, a new innovation lab. And again, cafeteria and kitchen serving line upgrades for about $1.9 million worth of renovation work. Over at East View, again, that was one that we had discussed in 2012, had really recently underwent a significant renovation. We would look to really address the innovation lab upgrades, which was what's called the old MAC lab, Room 113. And so that would be done over at. Uh, and so that would be done over at Eastview, about a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. A lot smaller than a a lot less money than any of the other buildings again, because it went through a major renovation. Over at Rochambeau, about ten point five million dollars worth of work to be done. A full interior renovation, as we had discussed on the previous slide, this was one of the buildings that we had identified. Uh, needing a complete renovation, very similar to that scope of work that was identified or done to Eastview. Also some air handling equipment that needs to be replaced, boiler plant upgrades again. Uh, some large infrastructure items that need to be updated. Again, the kitchen cafeteria renovations uh at the tune of about a million dollars for a total of ten point five million dollars over at Rochambeau. At the high school, again, you'll you'll see here, the numbers are 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 bigger as you get to the bigger at the bigger buildings. But obviously project lead away, a lead the way upgrades, which is converting some storage space to support uh the program space. From the project lead the way, about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of work there. Air handler and ventilation upgrades, uh provide numerous uh relief air louvers. Corridor ceiling replacement throughout a very large building, uh a a large number at five point nine million dollars. Case work replacement, again, replacing case work throughout all the majority of the classrooms, uh specifically in the music wing. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and ADA accessibility across all of the building, uh about seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So a a total of about eight point one million dollars worth of work over at the White Plains High School. And that represents pretty much renovations and alteration work that we're going to be looking to do. There's also some additional classroom space and we're going to talk about that in the in the in the next few slides. Damon House, if you remember, that was one of the buildings that was identified through the BCS and discussed with the committee. That's really uh reached its end of its useful life. And here's a building that really, uh unfortunately, it's not cost prohibitive to it's or it is cost prohibitive. To try to re renovate or refurbish that building. The needs of the high school and additional program space lend itself to a perfect match to be able to look at demolishing the Damon House. As identified and then to construct a new on the same footprint or in the same area where Damon House occupies. To construct a new fifty thousand square foot educational facility with about twenty three new classrooms. Uh, and support spaces and some of those spaces include life skill programs, vocational programs. Social and emotional support offices, additional science labs, music rooms, IT department, health services. Uh, there would be some additional parking, so the thought would be to be able to increase. And provide additional instructional space for the high school in the footprint or on the area where Damon House. One stood and sort of kills two birds with one stone. We have the ability to get rid of a building that has exceeded its useful life and we have the ability to address the needs. Going forward with the curriculum and the direction of the high school moving forward. And I don't know, Dr. Richter, if you wanted to add, Richter, if you wanted to add a little bit to the slide about the the needs on the vocational side or the. Educational component to it.
Sure, Severio, it's really hard for me to sit through a meeting this long without speaking, so appreciate the opportunity.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's great. Um, yeah, so so you know, again, in in trying to maintain the ultimate flexibility. Uh, that we know is going to be important because we're talking about, right, you know, the construction over the course of years and. Um, the future is is always difficult to predict, but. We want to stay in line with the the goals, um, uh, you know, that that exists. In our annual strategic plan as well as the goals that the board has put forward to provide. Uh, more unique opportunities for our learners that don't presently exist on our campus. Um, just basically because we don't have the the physical space, so something like, for instance, a dance studio. Um, and expanding our fine arts program to be able to offer dance. You know, th- this is going to be a a great opportunity here in the new facility. Um, a state of the art and very welcoming family information center. Um, thinking about vocational programming, are there going to be uh programs that we may be able to offer on campus in White Plains? Perhaps at at, you know, e- even a a a different cost than we're presently plan uh paying to send students to BOSI's. These are, these are again, ve- very flexible here, but these are the types of ideas that that we're thinking about. Um, the life skills planning, uh is there, is there a way for us to be able to provide? Training uh and and real life learning experiences for our students in the life skills that we don't presently have. Um, in our in our building right now at White Plains High School. But we also have been talking about the the possibility down the road. And nothing, of course, is certain, but the possibility down the road of of being able to offer a a health clinic on campus. And and this would again, uh provide that opportunity to be able to to house that clinic. Uh, along with with our professional development opportunities, again, opening up a building. Um, to to be much more conducive uh to professional learning, staff development. Um, so a lot of additional science labs that we would be able to again incorporate. Um, in in a much more modern way than than we necessarily have them uh right now on on campus. Again, not that what we have right now isn't great, it's absolutely great, but trying to envision, right, to think. Um, a- about the future and and what we would like to be able to see. Uh, this building would house a lot of alternative space. Um, that could be you that could be flexed and used, um, how however we we need it in the future. And these are some of the ways that we're planning on that now, social and emotional services, having opportunities for students to be able to engage with. Um, you know, helping professionals in a different type of a setting uh than they're presently in, we think that that would be conducive as well. Uh, and again, one of the things um that that Severo hasn't mentioned yet, but that you'll see in a moment. Is that there's also a direct connection to the facility, so whereas right now there's a break. Um, you can't walk, you know, through the high school into um Damon House. In the new facility, there would be a sky bridge uh that would directly connect uh the two buildings, so students would be able to access. Um, the building without actually uh leaving the the high school.
Yeah, and and as Dr. Richter had had mentioned, again, these are just some preliminary. Uh, thoughts and ideas of what of what the building or what this addition uh would look like. And as Dr. Richter had mentioned, there there is the thought or the use of a sky bridge to connect the high school to the new addition. The nice part about it is that just the natural topography of the grade as to where the Damon House sits. In relation to where the high school is allows for, or there is a natural contour or. Descending grade as you get a little bit further to the left, if you're looking at the at the image. Uh, the grade slopes down, which allows us then to be able to have a connect, a a direct connection between. The second floor of the high school with uh with the addition. Again, the thought right now is just really incorporating looks and materials or architectural style. Of the existing building with the proposed addition, again, but there'll still be a lot of conversation and thoughts with the Board of Ed. Um, and the and the uh the administration to go through as to what this would actually look like and what the final rendition would look like. But again, we just wanted to give uh an idea of what our thoughts were for for what this addition could look like. Um, and again, this slide really just shows in section how the topography allows itself. To be able to address and to connect the two buildings together and you could see that. The walkway or the sky bridge that would connect the building also has enough height to allow for vehicular access as well as. Bus access underneath that sky bridge, so again, as we talk about circulation across the site. And being able for buses to be able to to maneuver the site, again, that sky bridge allows for that flexibility. So again, we were just trying to show in section, you know, what that what that looks like, but again. A lot of work that would be needed into what the final rendition of what that would look like. Um, I don't know if I had mentioned, but the cost of that, we estimated at approximately thirty three million dollars. For the fifty thousand square feet worth of of addition. And one of the last components to the phase one, uh we looked at athletic improvements. And so the thought would be to uh install turf and sports lighting on field twelve. Over at the high school at a cost of four point two million dollars. So again, you know, one of the charges is, you know, how how do you, how do you pay for this? How do you, how are you able to get this work done? And what one of the items that we talked about was the establishment of a new capital reserve. Obviously, we talked in previous slides about utilizing the remaining monies associated with the two thousand nineteen. Uh, capital reserve, but the establishment of a new capital reserve really allows for the district. To be able to future budget for not only this work and the future work, but also. Whatever remaining work out of that four hundred million dollars that I started talking about way at the very beginning. You know, this, what I what I had mentioned before, what we're talking about totals about a hundred and fifty million of the four hundred million. So being able to establish these capital reserves allows the district and provides the district with the future ability to do this and. How we would go about it is in the two thousand twenty two budget vote, we would look then to go to the voters to authorize. The establishment of a new capital reserve and that capital reserve would be used to fund. Phase two and future master plan projects. Um, the 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 items associated with it is, right, you use it to pay for the capital projects or the construction costs. Most of the times, it's it's also funded through unexpended funds or savings that you may see. In your general budget and or other legally available funds. We would look at this time to establish the reserve at approximately fifty million dollars or a maximum amount of fifty million dollars. So that that reserve could be funded up to fifty million dollars. We would look for that reserve to be funded over a fifteen year period, because as we had talked about. You know, this is, this is a long range plan, twenty plus years. The first phase, we're looking to probably get done somewhere in three to four years, so the district would look to be able to utilize this reserve. Over a long time, over fifteen years. And what it does really is it helps to reduce taxpayer burden because you're not looking to increase the budget. Each year to be able to put money aside, you're able to take your savings, put it in this capital reserve and through voter authorization. The the Board of Education is able to utilize and transfer that funds to be able to pay for the 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 needed construction projects. So so the, what we would look to pay for on the first round of projects, those instructional and. Uh, spaces that we talked about totals about seventy one million dollars, which also. That seventy one million dollars includes the thirty three million dollar building addition that we were talking about at the high school. So we would look to utilize the remaining portion of the two thousand nineteen reserve, which is eleven point four million. We would look out, we would look to go to the voters and ask them for permission or authorization. To issue debt service in through serial bonds for the amount of sixty million dollars. And that would total the seventy one point four million dollars. And the 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 benefit of this is this would come at a tax neutral cost to the taxpayers. And the new capital reserves that we would look to establish as part of that that voter authorization. We would look not to utilize any of that for this phase, right? That's what we talked about utilizing those reserves for the next phase or phase two. This first phase would be again, utili- would be paid for using utilizing the capital reserves. And going out for bond authorization or voter authorization for a bond referendum. And again, that helps to stabilize the district's debt service or its obligation and proactively neutralize any additional tax increases. So again, by issuing that, that's how we come up with it being tax neutral to the taxpayers.
Can you expand on just for anyone who's listening a little more about being tax neutral? And that debt service is is, you know, coming off the books, um, so that to explain a little more fully how that works.
Sure, and maybe uh and maybe better suited to that?
Well, well, I'll I'll pass it off to to Rick uh from Capital Markets, our fiscal advisor, who's who's certainly the expert in this area.
Yeah, that's a good question, Cheryl, so way that we structured this, um, you know, project to come on. Is that the district has in the twenty twenty six, twenty seven fiscal year. A rather significant drop in local share, so local share meaning, you know, debt service the district pays out. Less building aid that's received on existing capital projects that had occurred in prior years. So the the thought being is when you look out in future years. Um, to to plan out for that significant drop in local share. The thought process on on this project is to do the HVAC project. Um, you know, first, which which is paid for by, you know, federal resources, um, as well as capital reserve dollars. So no impact to the local share in that first part, which is HVAC. Then we use the remaining two thousand nineteen reserve, which is about eleven, you know, eleven point four million as the first funding source. Um, and the earlier phases, so you think about how long these projects, you know, once voters authorize it. To get through the SED process, that takes us to sort of the first borrowing of the sixty million dollars to come on. Um, when we have that drop essentially, so what we're looking at is bringing on the debt service to to. Fill in that significant drop in local share, so that the 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 impact to the taxpayer. While there's an impact in the taxes that on a standalone basis for the project. There's no incremental impact to what the taxpayers are currently paying in the twenty two fiscal year.
If you have it, uh, could you share kind of what the, what kind of dollar amount you're looking at as far as the local share goes?
Yeah, so the local share, um, you know, currently. In the twenty. We'll call it the um twenty three, twenty four fiscal year. Um, which is the year prior to this project coming on is four point seven million dollars annually. No future year um goes above that. So that's sort of your max point is the year prior to this project coming on, which is the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year. Uh, there's no incremental increase above that, um, the taxpayers.
So for the twenty twenty two year, uh where it's tax neutral, it's because among other things about the amount of time it takes to go through the SED. It won't remain tax neutral.
It'll remain tax neutral, um, no incremental increase from the year prior to this project coming on, which is the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year.
So I guess said another way, we would be retiring four point seven million dollars of current debt. And and that would then retire and then the subsequent following year, we'd be taking on new debt. With an equal payment of the same amount, so the year to year variance would be zero or about zero.
Essentially, yeah.
And and that's kind of what you're looking at it, so and you talk about the local share, I guess that's that's our debt service, what what we would end up paying and. The, I guess the only other way you could do that is if you did local capital projects annually, if you didn't do the borrowing, right?
Yeah, so I mean, the the downside of that, um, is that when you do sort of just. You know, emergency projects or repair projects, there's no building aid on those, so. The idea here is that, you know, combine it with a larger project to do the work that you need to do. Otherwise, it becomes an annual re- repair project or annual maintenance that doesn't receive building aid. So the idea here is to sort of leverage your building aid, leverage your reserves to do a sizable project with no incremental impacts. It's important to say incremental impact to the taxpayers because, you know, on its own, obviously, there's there's. An impact, but it's, you know, what are the taxpayers paying as far as local share goes before this project comes on? And this project being phased in, um, controls for that in the sense that you're not having a large increase in future years because of that decrease.
And I think I I think that's a good explanation, I think part of it too though is. You could get aid on the smaller projects or on the smaller annual projects, but they would be smaller projects. And and it would be a two step approach, right? The you voters would approve it one year. You'd file, you'd wait a year probably to go through SED and then implement the following year, but it, like I said, they'd probably be for smaller. Type project roofs, boilers, windows, those types of infrastructure projects where you can only do certain portion at a time.
Aid comes in and you don't have anything, you know, as far as debt service to match it up against, right?
You'd still get aid though, right?
Yeah, you still get aid, it just won't offset against and against any existing debt that's associated with it. Cause it's using fund balance, yeah.
But just just.
I mean, it's not necessarily a bad thing either, though, right?
And just to be simplistic in terms of, you know, sort of a a mathematical calculation, so retiring debt service. Is then essentially equivalent to the new debt service, so it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything more.
Right, right, I think that's what Jim Jim said and it really, it was a great addition of clarity. Um, to everything, yep, that's how I understand it. That's how I understand it. So, true.
Okay. And that, and that's, you know, should also be noted that that's a healthy cycle for school districts to bond work and to have debt service coming off of their books, which allows them to utilize and have long-range plans where you can utilize debt services coming off your books to be able to do those work. So it's a healthy cycle for districts to have to be able to plan and manage long-range plans. That's a key component to being able to do it. So, yes. All right. So the, the, the next couple of slides really talks about the phase two, which is what we see happening around two thousand twenty-five. Because again, as we identified the phase one, which was approximately a hundred and fifty million dollars, including those three, those three items that we talked about, ventilation upgrades, uh, to, you know, the ventilation portion, excuse me, the building upgrades and the athletic field components. This now, the phase two, we would look to happen in about, uh, three or four years from the phase one. Those renovations and improvements would include renovating Highlands, as we talked about, renovating Ed House, again, two buildings that require full renovations to them, replacing the high school, uh, field house with the new building, as we had identified or talked about before, really at its useful life and needing to be replaced due to, due to meeting its new needs. Uh, and also including a health and wellness component of that building, uh, looking for turf softball, baseball fields. And we anticipated the amount of work in that phase two to cost approximately fifty-nine point eight million dollars. And again, how would we look to fund the phase two? In around two thousand twenty-five, well, we would look to use what the capital reserves that we've established in two thousand twenty-two. It would require voter authorization to be able to use those funds. But through speaking with the business office, right, and, and the, the district feels comfortable that, that it could fund that capital reserve to the tune of about thirty-two point eight million dollars by two thousand twenty-five. And then we would look again to go out for additional serial bonds or look for voter authorization to go back out to debt service for another round of bonds. And again, that would be replacing again, as, uh, as had discussed, uh, as Rick had discussed expiring, uh, or replaces existing expiring debt service for another twenty-seven million dollars. And that's how again, we would accomplish the fifty-nine point eight million dollars with again, a very similar response to again, it being tax-neutral to the taxpayers. So the same definition that Rick had given before follows the same suit as to the process that we would follow in going through and paying for phase two. So again, keeping that momentum going and looking at how we would address the future needs of this long-range plan.
But just quickly on that Severio, so we talked about, you know, the, the phasing of the first phase, let's call it with capital reserve, then bring on the debt service to control for that decrease in debt service in the twenty-seven fiscal year. Looking in the out years, next, uh, rather significant drop-off is in the twenty-twenty, twenty-thirty-two fiscal year. So then we talked about the phase two concept is use the reserves first and then put the debt service on when that next drop, you know, down the road occurs. So that, that's sort of the strategy I think that we kind of came up with was a two-phase approach, but bringing on the debt service in years where we, the district has, you know, significant drop-offs to control for that to make it flat in the out years as well. So that, that's a strategy that was developed. And I think, you know, I think it works, you know, in looking at the, you know, the planned phase one and two, given the reserve dollars and, and what we're looking to put on in debt service.
And then, uh, obviously there were, as we had talked about way at the beginning, when I, when I keep repeating that four hundred million dollars' worth of work that had been identified, right? That's part of the long-range infrastructure projects, and they'll be included in future annual operating budgets and future ways of how we would look to get that work done. So the, the, the next slide really identifies some of that other work that again, was identified through the committee and through the BCS. So again, there were four different areas or categories of work that we had identified. Continued infrastructure upgrades such as boiler upgrades, interior lighting, oil tank replacement, electric upgrades, ADA upgrades. We also looked at program space renovations, so gymnasium renovations, classroom renovations, media center upgrades, upgraded flexible furniture, uh, again, things for the program space that we would look to update. We also some additional program space additions, possible multipurpose space additions, uh, an amphitheater addition, exercise room additions, maybe some additional storage space, a fifty-meter pool addition, vehicular shelters, a new wrestling room. Again, these were all items that came out of that, uh, that facilities or that planning process that are ultimately identified or categorized four hundred million dollars' worth of work. And again, as I had mentioned before, th- this list is fluid. So you know, again, we're, we're putting out there right now where this list stands. But in four, five, six years from now, some of the items may come off, may drop off. There may be some new ones added to it as the district goes in a different direction, as needs or changes go. Um, so again, this, this plan would look to be fluid as it, as it continues as your long-range plan. And then ob- obviously field, uh, fields and grounds work as well as athletics. So new parking lots, exterior walkways, fencing, you know, athletic field upgrades, bleachers, backboards, scoreboards, drainage, track upgrades. Again, all of these are exterior components, uh, that, that also have been identified and prioritized as needs. But again, would maintain, would remain on this list of the overall projects that we would look to try to get done as far as a long-range plan. So what the, what are the next steps? So really, starting from today, right, our January eighteenth meeting, which is the meeting that we're having right now with the entire board to review and to discuss the plan that that would, that, that's been put together over this, over these last, you know, four years. Um, we would make that presentation. Come February, on the February fifteenth board meetings, we would look to have two things done. One, a SEQA declaration where the district is required by the state education department to identify itself as lead agency and to make a determination in the significance or the environmental significance that a project of this nature, this phase one that we were talking about with that hundred and fifty million dollars, as to what the significance uh, on, on an environmental side is. And we've identified because of the type of work that needs to be done, specifically the building addition, it exceeds certain thresholds of a type two. So this work would clari- would categorize itself as a type one action. And so the board would need to declare itself lead agency and adopt a type one SEQA determination for this work. It would also at that February fifteenth date, also look with bond council's help and to determine a resolution for the Board of Education to authorize a proposition to go out to the community to issue bonds in the amount of what we had discussed, the first phase being the sixty million dollars' worth of bonds. So those would be two significant items that would happen at the February fifteenth board meeting. On the February twenty-eighth board meeting, legal notices would be advertised because there are specific waiting times or wait periods that are required, not only by the Board of Education as far as when they could ask the voters for bond referendum and physically go out for bond referendum, as well as when the district makes and determines their SEQA. There's some waiting periods along with that. So legal notices would be filed on February twenty-eighth. During the time between February and May, we would look to take this show on the road and discuss with the community and make various presentations to the community, obviously with the board's input and, and, and changes or modifications as, as we, as we see fit. We would look to then inform the community and make several presentations to them for this to coincide with a budget vote and a bond referendum vote. So that would look to happen in May. So the timeline works backwards from voter authorization and budget vote in May, working backwards with those standard and required timeframes that I identified before, puts us on this schedule of where we are. So finishing with the meeting tonight, going into the next board meeting on the fifteenth, then the twenty-eighth, and then ultimately presenting to the community additional presentations leading up to that board resolution and budget vote on in May. That's pretty much it. The end of the presentation. I know there was quite a lot that everybody went through, so I would expect there to be questions. So obviously I'm turning it back over to the district uh, and the Board of Ed and, and anyone in that may have any questions regarding what we, what we talked about.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. So, um, uh, at, you know, at this time, if any board members have any questions or clarifications needed.
I just had a quick one. So I, I noticed it's, it's changed somewhat since our last conversation in, in August, just in terms of square footage and different things we put into the plan. How, how long do we go forward with the fluidity of this? And when are we sort of like locked into what we decide as a community? Or is that at the boat, a boat in May? Is that prior to that? Like at what point does this keep, you know, not changing? It's really not changing that much, but I noticed a considerable reduction in square footage from the hundred to the sixty to the fifty. Just that's the thing that stood out to me a little bit.
Yeah, I, obviously, I, obviously the district, Dr. Rick, and, and, and could elaborate on more. Just, I wanted to just specifically mention about reevaluating the square footage. Yes, when we had presented this previously, the square footage was a lot higher, uh, obviously cost implications as well as needs. Uh, and going back to the administrators and the high school and, and reevaluating our needs for that came back with a reduction in the square footage of that. I think what we're presenting tonight really is, um, I think where, where we would want to be. When I talk about changes or modifications to it, I think everything is fluid. And so, you know, you could expect some minor modifications, but I wouldn't expect significant changes to the plan. I think at this point, I think the committee, the district and everyone involved feels that this plan that we're presenting is the best plan that we've come up with at this time. Not only in, in the priority of the needs, identifying the scope of work and also laying out what we think is a financially prudent plan on how to be able to pay for this work. I think we're at that point, although I don't want to say it means no changes can be done, right? I think, all right, Dr. Rick and Anne, you, you obviously can add to that as well. But I, I think we're at the point where we've solidified and come to what we think is the best plan. And now it's, it's, it's up to the board in moving forward or, 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 or that, that thoughts about it.
Thank you.
I think, um, and thank you, Severio. And I, and I think you, you know, part of, uh, part of the, the great aspect of this process has been that you, after the initial planning committee meetings, um, the subsequent subcommittee of the Board of Education meeting for, for master plan. So, you know, uh, uh, as many of you came, you weren't part, you know, you weren't on that subcommittee, but, you know, the board has been kind of, or the, the board members who were part of that subcommittee have been kind of, um, you know, not kind of very, very much involved in, in what you're seeing this evening in terms of, you know, a reduction in square footage and, and some other changes, um, that, that are part of this ultimate plan. I think, you know, um, it's, as Severo says, it's always fluid and, and certainly anything can be, and anything can be adjusted. I think what we're most proud of is, um, being able to bring in all of the, the top-tier points from the, the original master planning committee, um, all, all those stakeholder voices. And then of course, uh, being able to take it, take the initiative, um, to plan, to bring on new debt as, as the old debt drops off, to maintain to the extent possible, uh, a neutral impact to our taxpayer. You know, the board has been really uh, fiscally conservative, you know, certainly we want to do everything we possibly can to keep, keep tax increases down or at least to a minimum based on what's absolutely needed. So this plan, uh, being able to bring this, this, what essentially is a big capital project forward and keeping that neutrality has been something that we've been happy with. But I will say this, um, there's no perfect plan. And, you know, even myself, I have to kind of wring my hands a little bit because I see my wrestling room is in the third phase. And okay, I, I, I'll, I'll take that. Uh, because you, you know, ultimately everybody could try to identify what they'd want to see in the first, second or third phases. What we really try to do is maximize the building condition survey, um, you know, those priority one and two items. Um, and then as we always do, uh, identify capital improvements that we can make annually, look for other creative ways to, to, uh, identify and secure funding. Uh, again, that gives me more time, well, not me, but it gives us more time to pursue other avenues of either grant funding, um, or, or additional creative methodologies to secure funding without, without increasing, um, you know, taxes to the extent that we're able. Did I, did I get that, Anne? I always tread lightly in these conversations.
I absolutely did. Well done. Yeah. Subcommittee's been working very, very hard. We've had many meetings.
I just wanted to comment that, um, I do appreciate the collaborative process that, um, was involved here, you know, and having all the stakeholders from the individual, uh, you know, buildings initially, um, sort of feed into, um, you know, what was initially presented. Um, the professionals that joined us, the, um, the facility staff, the administration, um, the board members, it really was collaborative. We had community members um, on the master planning subcommittee. And I think, um, it was a very thoughtful, measured kind of process, um, to, to bring something forward that is, um, very future-thinking, um, yet, you know, fiscally responsible and, and really will serve our district well, um, you know, moving into the future. So, um, I, I do want to thank everyone for their participation.
So, um, just as a, as a thought, I, I, and I, Jim, I see, I absolutely see your hand. I just want to also offer all the trustees as always. Um, one of the things that we can do, one of the mechanisms, you know, we have a little bit of time. One of the mechanisms, certainly if you think of something overnight tonight or over the weekend and you want to send it in, uh, absolutely do that, um, you know, and, and we, we, we can, we can do a lot of things. So, um, I, I, Severio did a great job of really bringing together and everybody, sorry, Mike and everybody else, uh, but, but really bringing um, a lot of information down to what I think is, is sort of a manageable, uh, uh, you know, amount that to, to process and, and to think about. But even if a question pops up after tonight's meeting, certainly, you know, we have time to be able to explore that. Uh, but Jim, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, this is an opportunity to share what kind of what we've been, what we've gone through and, uh, and have a discussion, uh, as part of a work session. Uh, I figure this is a, a great opportunity to do that, um, and being on the committee uh, has been a, has been a good experience. And, um, and I want to thank all the members of the committee, just, just as Cheryl did. Fred, it was just fun watching you go around in a circle. I think you were upside down on my screen a minute ago, too. Um, a lot's happened though, right? I mean, we've got, uh, and, and, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to throw out a couple of comments and thoughts. And if you, if you guys want to respond to it or not, I'm going to kind of share some of what we've been through. Um, you know, we've, we've talked about all of our buildings. Um, you know, we've, we've, we've talked about the priorities and, um, accessibility. Uh, we've got four elementary schools or two elementary schools are basically at a hundred years old right now that, um, we're moving forward with. They are ADA accessible, but I, I don't, it, it's tough to say if they're ADA-friendly. And, and that's difficult, um, because, uh, you know, we've got a school like Post Road, which is a ADA-friendly building. Uh, and that's, uh, something that's uh, really, I think where we want to be, um, as a district. Um, you know, and some of the discussion we had, and I asked a question about it was what about replacing a building and and, and you know, some of the information shared by, by the committee members are, well, our buildings are in really good shape. And then that makes it difficult to get some aid at the state, at the state level. So I mean, that, that says great things about how we take care of our assets. Um, but then it makes something like what I just mentioned, um, difficult. But, but again, it's, um, that's still very hard, right? Because I mean, I, you got to put yourself in the shoes of, of a parent who may have, um, you know, a, a disability or difficulty, um, themselves or, or their children and how we want our kids to be in our schools. Um, and as we look at our two-hundred-year-old elementary schools, the GW and MAS, um, you know, we've got, uh, by the time we're done with this process, Church and Ridgeway aren't too far behind. They were built in the fifties. And, you know, we're, we're, we're bouncing right up against that. And I think um, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we open up a discussion about how long we want to keep buildings and what the average useful age will be, because I think every building provides different opportunities because certainly, uh, Eastview, it was, it was a good investment. I think it was about twenty, twenty-five million dollars to rehabilitate it. And I think the district is served well by that. And the work at Highlands and, and Rochambeau, I think are going to be well-served by that too. Um, so I think that's really good. Uh, but, but those are, those are the things that, that still weigh heavily, uh, with me personally, because, um, you know, again, I, I want to put myself in the shoes of, of, of all of our Because um, you know, again, I I want to put myself in the shoes of 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 all of our parents and all of our students. Um, we, you know, we talked a little about equity and equality and making sure that um, our our, all of our students have the the right opportunities and all of our buildings are. And that was part of our discussion that happened. And I think that was a really good part of our discussion. So as a committee, we had a good understanding of uh, really, you know, what's happening at all of our elementary schools, at least. Because that's that's certainly, you know, where all the, where we have different kids in different grades at at those different locations. Um, you know, the discussion of operating costs was brought up, and I'm glad you brought it up this evening. That's because that's, it's a very real cost that's going to be out there. And I don't think we want to make it sound like it's any type of a Trojan horse. We know the cost of the operating expenses for uh, filtration, ventilation, everything else, which we think is important. And I think certainly I'm on board, on board with that. You know, we talked about the 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 building at Damon House, and I know we're going to be, we call it, well, it's the Family Information Center and then the Staff Development Center. Uh, Joe, I was, I was looking for an email that that you sent me because I asked a question of what that current square footage is. And I can't find it. I apologize. Um, I think.
It's okay. I think it's somewhere like nineteen thousand or fifteen thousand. What is, what is the current footprint?
Yeah, Mike, do you have that? I think I think.
I have it. Um, the total gross is twelve thousand five oh four. Um, IT also has twenty-five hundred square feet at high school for storage and torium repair for equipment.
Yeah, so about about fifteen thousand. And and we know, you know, one building is a house or was was once a house, um, certainly not an efficient use of space for, um, I mean, we, I think, and I'm not saying we're not making good use of our space, just that a house is not a great use of space for for offices or instructional purposes. Um, and uh, you know, I I try to reconcile out our waning enrollment, fifty thousand square feet of new space. Um, and I'm going to have a difficulty with that because and and thirty-three million dollars. And then I, to be honest, that's that's where, um, as far as a size, I mean, I think that's where I'm challenged the most when we talk about this project. Um, I'm not saying that that space, we can't have better space there. I think we should have better space there. And I'm not saying we need to replace one for one either. I could see a justification for addition of space. But again, with with those other things that I've talked about, you know, a waning enrollment um, and other levers that could be pulled to accommodate some spacing to additional spaces. Um, that's a big number and it's a big number for the community. Um, and you know, I'd like to see if 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 able to just some other things, you know, some other meat on the bones to to kind of get it, get my arms around that. Um, because it's, again, it's it's a big, it's a big number. Um, you know, and that goes with phase two. I know we talked about the field house and we talked about a wellness center. I would imagine there's going to be a fitness center down there. So we know there's always going to be some movement of use of spaces in one area down to another and um, opportunities for using use of other spaces. Um, and then also, you know, we talk about um, some vocational programs. And I guess that that leads me to another, you know, uh, uh, you know, another thing to talk about, which is BOCES, I mean, are we going to continue down that path? Are we not going to continue down that path? Because we are a a member district of BOCES, which offers many OCHED programs, which uh, we think are really helpful for our students. And I know as a board, we've uh, we've really increased many of our uh, slots so that none of our students are denied that opportunity. And I think as a as a board, that's something we uh, we felt really strong about. Um, two other things, and I promise to at least be quiet for a little while. Fields, I think, are great, and I think they're good for the entire community. Uh, you know, I could, I could get behind fields in phase one. I think two really rich areas of that that are in need of improvement are the baseball field, which is very wet down at the bottom next to Louts and certainly our softball field area. And I know those were targeted in phase two. Um, but large multi-space turf fields um, are always in great use by communities and healthy communities. And and I know those spaces would uh, would be well used by all of our community. And I think uh, if I had to, if I had to go left or right, you know, I I feel, I feel that that's a, that's a real winner there. And then last but not least, and this is something that obviously has come up more in the last year. And uh, Rick, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit if I can. You know, we know that um, inflation over the last year, four point seven percent at least, you know, that's that's kind of where we are. We hear about the Fed taking action, tightening the money supply. That's where it rising interest rates, we know the ten years gone up. And that uh, we've, you know, the economy's kind of been juiced with some of the bond buying that's been going on by the Fed over the last few years. Nobody's got a crystal ball. And I know uh, you know, what what, where do we stand two or three years now from now? If uh, those rates certainly go up, or if they do go up, I'm not saying they will go up, but if they do go up. And then how do we stand with our debt service at that point in time? We'd probably be a little bit over where we currently, excuse me, where we currently are. But I don't know what you're seeing and.
Yeah, I mean, you.
There's a lot of scenarios.
You know, none of us have a crystal ball to know what's going to happen, you know, in the next three years, let alone tomorrow. Um, but there was a good article, you know, our newspaper that we that we kind of follow is called The Bond Buyer. There was a good article in today's paper about how um, munis have actually moved in the opposite direction of treasuries. Um, and the thought process there is that the thought about, you know, taxes going up down the road, um, that the tax exempt income is going to become more, you know, uh, more beneficial, you know, to um, is a is a source of income for taxpayers down the road as it's exempt from federal income taxes to avoid those taxes. So we've seen quite a bit of demand, you know, coming into municipal market. Um, there's a lot of money on the sideline, as they say, you know, looking to be, you know, put to work. So, you know, rates have been, you know, fairly steady, you know, since the last, you know, several months where you know, treasuries have gone up and, you know, general interest rates, you have gone up. So whether or not that continues, it's hard to say. Uh, January was always a tough month to read the market because there's not really a lot going on. Um, but what we're seeing is that there's going to be a lot of, you know, redemptions of older bonds as we get into February and March of this year. And the expectation is that a lot of that money is going to come in. Um, and and rates, in theory, from units would would lower as the demand comes into the market. So we'll continue to follow it. Um, the good news is that if if interest rates obviously go up, the while you're not a hundred percent aided as far as state aid goes, um, the state aid of, you know, the way the aid projects, that rate obviously would correspond to whatever rates are within that particular market. So a portion of the projects that will receive building aid will also impact um, you know, the higher rates. But it's it's too tough to say, you know, where things are going to be, you know, let alone this week and a couple of years from now. But it's certainly something that obviously will follow. Um, but we can't really say with any certainty rates are going to be a hundred percent, you know, a hundred basis points higher when this project comes on, because it's too kind of early to tell. Because a year ago, you know, during COVID, nobody would think that rates would be a hundred basis points lower from that point. So it's, it's um, you know, every thought, everything's going to go up, but they've actually come down quite a bit. So, you know, the ten year uh, municipal bond triple A rate um, is right around one percent. So it's one of the lowest rates historically speaking. So we're still kind of hovering on that level. Uh, but you make a fair point. Nobody knows what rates are going to be, you know, down the road. But it's something that obviously will um, continue to follow.
Thanks, Rick. Yeah, and I know people, I appreciate the point about tax free, and that's important. I guess at what point do people, will people accept the high quality corporate and pay the taxes versus a a tax free rate? And everybody knows what that breakage is, you know. There's a point where that happens. And I I agree with you. But I mean, from experience, the timing has been very good recently or in the recent past for uh, for the market, for sure. But, you know, we're we're hearing a lot about it more than now. And I'm sure in the next year, we're going to hear even more about it as it leads up to next November.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I I know Dr. Stein also has her hand up.
I do. Um, um, I'm in a little bit of a different place than Jim is regarding Damon House. Um, because I was more in favor of frankly, the larger structure, because the incremental cost in terms of building has to do, costs less as you go up. You have your foundation and your your base cost on your footprint is a significant amount. But per floor, as you're going up, you're paying less. And I, what I was concerned about would be underestimating what we need, because this is space that we don't have to define so much yet, but have and doesn't have to cost a lot to have. And if we don't use the space now, it will cost us more to read, to build again in the future. So I think that it's um, I'd rather not be um, foolish in terms of the money we're spending now. I'd rather go for, I certainly wouldn't want to go smaller than we're going right now.
Jim's question about the fields, is that something we can look at annually? Like, I I look at Eastview, my son's over there, and and that's a field that's ripe for maybe so much community use, you know. And then the softball field as well, the baseball, is that, you had mentioned earlier about, you know, annual expenditures. Is that something that can be, while we're doing these big, these big projects, this long-term planning? Is that something we can look at annually, Frank? I mean, I'm not sure. Maybe that Frank's not there first, but I still don't know who.
Uh, Frank can, Frank has been looking at it, so let him chime in.
So, yes, I have a whole list. So you saw that list on the back page, you know. So right now, I I think we mentioned about the track at at Eastview. So, you know, we are putting some money in long-range plan. We're hoping uh, one-off money maybe at this year that we may take care of the track. But we did renovate the softball field, the baseball field, you know, just a year and a half ago, two years ago. So we put irrigation systems in. So Ralph Field is going to get done, I think, this spring. We're going to look at that. We're going to look at moving the softball field over as part of our work. So we are doing a lot of work on the fields. We spent a lot of money at the high school, put batting cage, you know, we put a pitching cage. So I think we've uh, we've, every year, we're putting money towards the fields.
And in phase two, the like the um, the baseball fields down at the bottom next to Louts and and um, and that softball field, I I know we we talked, in the committee, we talked a little bit about that baseball field that would require some fill to top it off a little bit. And then also for the girls, and the softball, girl softball field, what what would that approximate cost be? What are you looking at there?
I thought I, and I, you know, looked at it like two years ago. I had somebody come out and look at it. There there's two things with the field. It's nice to put a turf field down and spend five million dollars or six million dollars, you know, for a field that has some limited usage. You know, and that's why the priority was field twelve, because, you know, those fields butt up against the residential and putting lights there, I would put lights on the tennis courts, I, you know, to get more use and use of the fields. But uh, I think with that, with the residents there, we, it would be limited use to just daytime. So, so that's why.
I mean, I'm not proposing, I wouldn't say proposing lights there, but I think you could put, at least on the baseball field, you could get two grid, very good diamonds. And you could probably line it as a multi-use field, too. It's, it's, it's a large enough, at least one field. I mean, that is a very big field.
And and it is on our plan to, you know, get it done. But I think our greatest need is, you know, field twelve. If you look at it, grass on it, just, we just sodded it a year and a half ago, and it's literally got torn up.
Well, I I I completely agree. I think that'd be a great field. I mean, I I just think back to when, it it seems like there wasn't a time when Louts wasn't the main field. But it was what, twelve or thirteen years ago? And uh, boy, it really did not look like a great field. And and for that matter, it wasn't used that much. And now it's hard to believe it not being used at all, I'm not being used. I mean, it could be because it's always in service and, you know, well, when I worked out of town, I would drive home that way at night many times, and those lights were on. And they and they still are. And and I think it's, I think it's great, um, you know, the ability to use it and uh, the the condition of the field is just terrific, uh, great for the community.
You know, and I don't know um, Rick or Severio, but one of the things that's important when we're we're talking about fields and athletics is to make sure that is structured with work that's being done uh, at the building level. Otherwise, it's not, doesn't receive building aid. So that's the other component of structuring some of this work. So you want to just keep that in mind as well.
I was, I was just going to comment on on when you talked about looking at them annually, combining them with larger projects that do address improvements to the buildings increases the aidability of the non-able portion typically field work or site work. So looking at it and just coupling it together, as Anne said, is really the way you want to try to approach it to maximize building aid, uh, you know, uh, to the district. So, but yeah, you could look at them annually, but it's nice to custom, it's nice to combine it with a larger project such that you can receive building aid on it as well.
Well, you're going to get eight as long as you do, what what's the minimum on the project? Fifty thousand or five thousand, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's a minimum spend and then you'll get your, and then it's based on your building aid units, right?
Well, it's based proportionally to the building aid, right? So so if you had a project that was a million dollars and you were doing five hundred thousand dollars worth of field work and five hundred thousand dollars worth of capital improvement inside the building, then your, then your aid ratio, I'm making it up thirty-two percent, you would be, you'd be eligible for maybe twenty percent of that thirty-two percent. Where if the number was a lot smaller, a hundred thousand dollars worth of interior work and nine hundred thousand dollars worth of site work, that edible portion may only be ten percent of your eligibility. So it's a, it's a little bit of a tricky formula to fit, to figure out. But the more you can combine as edible dollar value to the project, the more greater you drive building aid of your percentage of non-able aid. I don't know if I, I don't know if I just confused everybody, but that, but unfortunately, that's kind of the way that works.
That's why it's important to structure it together.
Yeah, I'm used to the Rick Gancy approach. I apologize. So um, and and I don't know if if Rick, if that's something you could, you could kind of um, build a straw man out of, just kind of looking at it different ways. It would be interesting to see, um, you know, to follow up with.
Yeah, so I mean, the the general rule is if you did a turf project, you have to do ten thousand dollars worth of work in the building to generate the full allowance, cost allowance for that particular building. So if your, you know, allowance, cost allowance, which is the ceiling that the state sets is, you know, ten million dollars for construction and two point five million dollars for incidental, which is everything outside the building. If you did ten thousand dollars worth of work in the building, you generate the full two point five million of allowance outside the building. So um, we've seen districts that just kind of take the, take advantage of the rules and just go right to ten thousand. But um, it's important to have some some concept where you're doing work inside the classroom space to generate the allowance outside the building. Um, there there is talk, actually, uh, and it's been in, it's been in all prior uh, for governor's budgets. It hasn't yet passed, but the the thought is um, that they'll kind of get away from that concept and have the rule that it's um, whatever work you do inside the building, it's um, twenty-five percent of the actual cost of the building generates the incidental allowance outside. So it kind of, it it hinders essentially turf field projects, because you don't generate that full allowance if we just do a small project inside. Again, that it hasn't really gone through the governor in the legislative process, but it's something that we're always aware of. Um, if it does get passed in this legislative budget, which I haven't read through the bill, it just came out today. I think the the state aid runs, everything that just came out. So one thing that we'll do is is to check to see if that language is still in their proposal. Um, because it's something that could be detrimental to, you know, turf projects down the road that we'll continue to follow.
We're also going to run, oh, go ahead, Jim.
No, I guess I'm just speculating. I mean, it would negatively affect all districts.
All districts.
Some of those upstate districts, too. So it's tough. I mean, it's got.
Yeah, I mean, it.
Hasn't passed.
It helps the state in the sense that, you know, less building need, they have to pay out. But, you know, if you think about school districts that do, you know, turf projects or parking lots or things outside the building. Um, every year, we kind of pointed out to our clients that it's something that it's in there. Please talk to the local delegation that it doesn't make its way through, because it could be, you know, have an impact not only to White Plains, but to every district in the state.
And the other aspect, though, that's also important is when SED evaluates any of our projects, any school district's projects, they're looking at what are the most critical items that would have come off the building condition survey. And that's always going to get first preference is my understanding as well. So we have to keep that in mind.
Which is why the wrestling room is in phase three, even though we're going to use it for tutoring when it's not in wrestling use. Which is why the wrestling room is in phase three, even though we're going to use it for tutoring when it's not in wrestling use.
The dance lab.
Dance lab.
Yeah. Roll up the mats.
I mean,
I just wanted to pass along a message that I just got from Carol Lyons. Um, she said that the chat has been turned off, but she just wanted to reach out to thank all of the, thank everyone for all of their work on the plan. I don't know if she's still out there listening, but I told her I would pass along her thoughts.
Thanks, Rose.
I just have one quick question. Uh, in regard to the increase in the electrical, when we do the, when we did this change, I think it was like one fifty to one eighty-two. Did you look, did the committee look at like what the city's putting up all over town, those car parts, those solar carports? Or are we looking at solar at all in this and any?
Yeah. Yeah, as part of uh, um, it wasn't a hundred percent clear, but yes, the the district's proactive in looking at alternative energy sources, whether it be solar arrays, wind turbines, other things. Because yes, as we go forward and and as we get some of the roofing done on the buildings, we may look then to um, it becomes a, it becomes more uh, appetite, it becomes more of an appetite to put solar arrays on roofs that you've just recently completed, right? Because you know that you have a long term, twenty years or thirty years of how good that roof is. So yes, the district's been proactive in looking, and the committee's been looking at alternative sources of how we could offset those additional utility costs. So yes, and whatever projects we would do as far as interior renovations and classroom upgrades, we would utilize the latest technology with LED flat panel lights, as well as daylight harvesting software and and um, you know, uh, motion sensors that would shut the lights off in the classroom. So all of those would you, would be incorporated into any type of renovation that we would do, which again, would help reduce the 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 demand on the, on the soul, on the uh, utilities, on the electric utility.
That's also part of, thank you, Sarah. That, Kane, that's also part of our green initiative, right, Frank?
Yeah, I'll just real briefly is that uh, New York Power Authority has put an RFP out for solar, for community solar, and uh, the district signed up for it, you know, uh, a year ago. So we are on the list. We're waiting for the state to come out with the next uh, the next phase, because the uh, the amount that they were looking for, they, I think it was thirty megawatts, they filled that slot. So they're looking for the state to put out the next phase, which would be, I think they're looking at another twenty, thirty megawatts, which which we're trying to line up right now to be included in that.
Thank you.
And we did um, take the estimates, um, just as a point of reference, that the estimates in the out years of our long-range plan didn't incorporate that into our our operating long-range plan, so that we could really get a sense of what that would look like. And the district has also been very aggressive of, you know, doing LED lighting wherever they could. Um, Frank's done quite a bit across the district, yeah.
Any more questions, comments? So I I'll just add, you know, I think everyone said um, pretty much what my, my thoughts are, uh, you know, Jim and uh, Cheryl, um, you know, this has really been a labor, because I think of when we first um, started this. This was pre-pandemic. And it seems like forever ago, but here it is, in living color now. Um, you know, so I I have to echo, it is a labor of love, and it's, it's a labor um, that shows we all care about our our district and moving it forward um, for the benefit of our students and staff. So thank you. And of course, we can still submit questions. A couple of things I know I'm going to think about, but we can still submit questions and um, and and have discussion. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you, Rose. We're in, and you know, again, and Jim, you you know this too, because this is your neck of the woods. Um, to have a project like this proposed that is able to leverage the the debt coming off is really tremendous. Um, you know, to try and maintain that equilibrium without a shock to the, the, the community, without a shock to the taxpayer. Um, you know, it's an advantageous position. And you know, certainly, it, it thanks to, to everybody for all of your hard work in, in, in trying to bring this project in in such a manner. I think it speaks a lot to the, 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 you know, sort of the uh, the responsible nature uh, that that the district has always taken. Um, and you know, continues to look into the future. And we really are trying to not be limited by a lack of imagination. Uh, you know, I think if, and I, you know, I'm speaking for myself here, but I'm sure some of you feel the same way. Over the last two years in, in navigating COVID land, uh, you know, some of the things that we, we kind of got uh, knocked off balance a little bit was because we just lacked imagination. And what could potentially happen and how things could potentially play out. Uh, so you know, having the ability now uh, to think about, all right, what, what am I not thinking about? What could happen? How could we best leverage this, this, this moment right now um, to provide uh, for the best possible outcome, or at least, you know, outcomes for the future of the district long after we're gone. Um, you know, that, that's a, that's a pretty, um, it's a pretty heady thing, and and it's a privilege to be in the situation that we're in right now to be able to provide that type of uh, of a solid future plan. Um, and and I just want to say thanks for that, because you know, it, a lot of thoughtful, a lot of thoughtful work went into getting to where we are this evening. A lot of different iterations, a lot of board feedback, a lot of community feedback. Um, and uh, and and just, you know, we, we really do appreciate it. Thanks, President Neller.
Thank you. There, if there are no more questions or comments.
All right, so we'll, we'll compile the questions uh, as they, as they come in from the trustees and 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 make any additional changes that we need to make. We're still on target uh, for the February fif- eighteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifty, the day after Valentine's Day. That's right, Frank, the day after Valentine's Day. Uh, so we'll still be on track there. Um, all right. Well, thank you very much, everybody.